We are live.
And I can hear everything.
Good. Joe, she's already calling for you.
And I was, I was the second one here, if you're listening.
I am listening, and I can see you, too.
He got here at 5:30.
I'm proud of you, Joe. It looks nice. You got, you got it for graduation.
It's nice haircut. No, I got it because my, my hairstylist said she's done. She's quitting. So I go, can I get one more cut? She's like, I go, what's, what's the plan? She goes, I don't know. She says, I think I might move to, I might move to, uh, Texas. I go, have you ever been? She goes, no. I go, what's making you go to Texas? She goes, um, I, I listen to a lot of influencers and I'm like, oh. This is, start a new career. Crazy. All right, I'm gonna get set up. We at six?
It's after six.
Is Jamie gonna be here tonight? Did he?
Jamie's, Jamie's also in the islands.
Jamie's on an island. Everybody's on an island but us. We might be on an island later here. Give me a sec. All right. All right, I show 6:01, so I'm ready to go. You guys ready?
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the village council regular meeting to order June 10th, 2025. Show the time at 6:01. Show that we have a quorum. However, we are missing, um, Jamie at this time, and we have remotely, uh, Kim Vandenberg, mayor pro tem on Zoom with us. So with that said, I need a motion to consider allowing remote participation.
Moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. So you're in, Kim. Adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions? Hearing none. I'll need a motion to approve the, uh, agenda as presented.
So moved.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next up, adoption of previous minutes. Does anyone have any questions? I did have one comment on it. I don't know if we said this, but I, I think I circled it, so I should be able to find it. Hold on one second. So it was regarding the, yes, it was regarding the Wuma meeting. You state that we noted that members of the audience chose to swear at officials.
You said that happened at the Wuma meeting.
Was there swearing?
I don't recall.
You said there were people using very rude language and swearing. That was what I remember. I can change that if I'd like.
Yeah, let's take that out, because I don't think I saw. I think we said there were, um, we, we recognized that we, if you think Marvin has a lot of people that are, um, I guess.
Outspoken.
Outspoken. Waxaw has more, but I don't know if we said anything about it.
What was said was that they, people in the audience made the two representatives swear that they would not support.
That's what it was. You are, they wanted them to swear that they would deny that, that.
They would not vote for that bill.
Resolution.
Or any part of it, if they broke it up in parts.
I'm glad I, I'm glad I looked at that, because I'm like, I don't remember saying they were swearing, because it was actually a pretty civil meeting.
Yeah, it was. It was, it was a good meeting.
Yeah.
All right, so let me, I will fix that, so you can, you can adopt those as amended.
Are you doing it now?
Yes, you won't be able to see it right.
Oh, okay.
I'm not magic, but yeah.
All right, so I'll need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Yep.
Okay. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Um, moving on. And Kim, I don't have you here, so, uh, usually you keep me on, on.
Pledge of allegiance.
Online. Pledge of allegiance. We have up next, all right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That never gets old. All right, public comment. Um, do we have anyone?
No one has signed up to speak.
No one has signed up, okay. Uh, we'll move on to feedback from the previous public comment period. Does anyone have anything for that?
Yeah, I've, I've got that. Um, and, you know, part of what I'll read here is just a, a statement regarding, uh, village staffing and, and some things about the budget. I was contacted by a resident last week about a social media post and reached out to get some clarification. Essentially, uh, there's been some confusion on social media regarding how many Village of Marvin employees we currently have versus what is proposed for this next year's 2026 budget. In terms of what was put out, posted on social media, that, that wasn't necessarily accurate. It was portrayed as that was going to be what our, um, next year's staffing would be. It was actually a listing of posi-, of positions, um, which does not equal filled jobs. The FY26 employee salary classification lists all the different potential job titles and salary ranges that the Village of Marvin can choose from. It shows the maximum number of positions that could be filled, not what's currently staffed or what is funded for the next year. So, um, we've added an employee matrix to the budget that shows which positions are funded. This matrix, which was included in the agenda packet on the May 29th council work session, shows the transparency in operations. In, in summary, not all listed positions are filled or funded from year to year. Only necessary roles are funded. No new positions are added without justification. Salary ranges that are listed are based on statewide data or other relevant studies. And, um, all of these updates, you know, really help to improve transparency, which is, you know, something that this council's been, uh, very, uh, and, you know, put a lot of importance to. Uh, we appreciate the public's attention and remain committed to transparency and responsible staffing.
Thank you, John.
One more thing. Uh, it came to our attention on June 2nd that staff created and posted a graphic on the village's social media accounts with the incorrect day of the week for the June 5th coffee with council. While the caption for that post was correct, the image was not. We apologize for this communication oversight. Our communication team are implementing additional proofing me- measures to ensure that future communications are free of errors.
And just for clarity, that was a staffing issue. It wasn't anything that council did, just so you're aware.
And, and I think it was updated, I, I know, within a couple of hours of it being recognized, which was still a, a couple of days before the event happened, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Austin.
Any other?
I had, I had one.
Okay.
So, um, we had a resident, um, post online that a picture of what Marvin roads look like, neighborhood roads, because that's all that Marvin owns, um, with potholes and cracks. And it says that my roads were recently paved, it says, but Marvin, and I have cracks with weeds growing in it. It is worse than that. I've asked pro temporary Kim if there is a warranty. Gave her photos and my phone number. It died on delivery. I'm not exactly sure how to interpret that, but I'm guessing that this resident, and it was Ron Hamel, said that he gave me this information. I haven't received it. Um, if you did send it to me, I apologize, but please send it again. But the picture that he posted online, um, have guardrails. None of our neighborhood roads have guardrails, so I'm not sure exactly what the picture that he posted is. But Davey, if you don't mind going out to, go out to Oak Brook, if you don't mind, um, take a look at their roads, and let's make sure that there aren't cracks and potholes and weeds growing in their streets.
Did they not, uh, falk spray those last year or year before?
I, I don't know. He posted this two days, three days ago, four days ago. I'm not sure, so.
I've been in.
So regardless, um, you know, and, and my position is mayor pro tem, not temporary. Yes, I am temporarily in the position as all of us are, but, um, if we could go ahead and find out what the situation of the Oak Brook roads are, that would be fantastic.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Anyone else? All right, moving on, going to presentations. Uh, recognition of, next up is recognition of, recreation manager Tyler Honeycutt's achievement of the Certified Parks and Recreation Professional CPRP certification accredited by the National Recreation and Parks Association. Do we have?
We actually do not have the physical certification. We just want to recognize his achievement of said certification, so certificate.
Will we, will we get something to give him at some point?
We will, at some point.
All right.
If he will give it to us, but we just want to say congratulations and well accomplished.
Yes. Well done, and we will make sure we follow up with that. Thanks. Great job, by the way. Okay, reports and updates. Managers report.
I don't have anything, sir.
Nothing? Next up, we have planners report.
Good evening, council. Um, two things. I know I wasn't at the work session. Did you guys all get a chance to review the, um, comp plan scope that was presented?
No?
The comprehensive plan scope for the RFQ. I believe Polamy and.
Polamy gave it out.
Gave it out. Do you guys sort of review? I just wanted to see if you guys had any questions or comments on it? If you haven't had a chance to review it?
Not had a chance.
We would like to, the goal is to post that RFQ within the next week, um, as I finish like the legal side of it and have, um, Christina and Chaplain review, but that's mainly the meat of the scope. Um, so if you get a chance, please review and just give me any comments or questions that you may have, by the end of the week, so we can get those potentially either incorporated in or addressed, clarified, and then so we can get it posted, so we can hit the ground running at the beginning of the fiscal year in July.
Okay.
Other than that, just want to remind, um, we do have the, still two ongoing rezonings. The ROMS investment, which, uh, the property next door, planning board did recommend that at their last meeting. However, it, the rezoning will be, or sorry, the public hearing for that rezoning will be at your next meeting in July, or sorry, your next regular scheduled meeting in July. Um, and then the Rayleigh Miller property is scheduled, uh, for a recommendation by planning board this month, and will also be on that same July 8th council meeting if, um, unless there's something by the applicant that wants to delay. So, any questions on this? Any question?
So they had, uh, public meeting on that, because I know I didn't attend the one that, for the Rayleigh Miller one. Did they have anything for that?
Neighborhood meeting?
For just the HOA neighborhood meeting, correct?
Yeah, they had their neighborhood meeting back bef-, right when they submitted their application.
Right.
Yep.
I did, I was not able to make that. That's why I was asking.
One, one thing about that, I, I heard something about a petition of some sort that was being sent to us, but I've not seen anything regarding that.
Uh, the applicants brought to my attention, I believe some residents in Somerset have started a petition opposing it, or at least opposing aspects of it. Some of it was brought up during public comment during the planning board meeting regarding like the buffer, um, and setbacks from the residential property, like the, the residential portion, uh, being proposed from the existing residential in Somerset. That was conveyed to the applicant. That's, um, somewhat what they are, they're in the process of looking at, either trying to, one, I've requested them to provide a cross-section and/or look at trying to increase that buffer, but also look at a certain condition of a, a minimum opaqueness for that buffer, if it remains at the 20 feet, which is what the ordinance is the minimum requirement. So, that's one thing that they're working on. I have not gotten the updated plans, obviously, and planning boards next week, so I should be receiving those the next day or two, but those will be presented next week.
Hunter?
Yep.
Did you, what did you just say about the opaqueness of the buffers? Can you just say that over time?
So one thing that, um, based off of comment, uh, public comment and discussion with the planning board at last month, the minimum width of the buffer, I think it's buffer type C. It's either C or B. I'm sorry. Uh, either way, it's a 20-foot minimum buffer and minimum of 60% opaqueness per the ordinance. With it being conditional zoning, um, and based off of that, those discussions with the planning board and, and public comment received, what was discussed with the applicant is looking at, if possible, increasing the buffer width and/or setting a minimum opaqueness higher than that 60% as a certain condition, um, out of their rezoning. So that's, uh, that's stuff that they were working on, should, should be working on, if not completed, and when, and that will be reviewed next week with planning board.
So was the applicant there at the planning board meeting for that discussion?
Yes.
You weren't? Yes, okay, so.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, one person from the applicant team?
Okay.
David Miller was there.
Okay, so he's, I mean, and, and he brought this to my attention, so I'm just wondering what exactly the, um, what the process is, how to handle it, but I know that there are residents of Somerset who have gone onto Rayleigh Miller property and have cleared behind their homes to extend their backyards and have taken out that natural vegetative buffer, which would increase or I guess decrease the opaqueness. Now, because residents have done that and have basically extended their backyards, what exactly, how, how exactly are we holding the applicant responsible for that? Because if they're doing that, then it seems like there was natural vegetative buffer to begin with. So I'm just a little unsure about how that's gonna work.
So in any instance with development, if there is natural ve-, or existing natural vegetation that can be preserved, that's healthy, that's kind of our first goal. So let's say.
But if it was, but if it was removed on, on the Rayleigh Miller property by those residents?
Yeah.
That's not Rayleigh Miller's fault, so.
No, no, agree. So what I'm trying to say is like, let's say a different development and it had existing vegetation, but per the ordinance, it only had 40% opaqueness. Like it did not meet that 60% minimum for the development. They would still have to then plan additional plantings as part of their landscape plan to meet that opaqueness requirement. So it's the same concept on this, even though vegetation was removed by, potentially by not the property owner. I mean, they're still going through the development process, meaning that they're gonna have construction documents and all that stuff and all that. So like they'll have a tree survey, so the trees that were removed or that are there, part of their site plan, like, that they're preserving can remain. If they're already gone, I, that, that, I feel like that's a civil thing. I don't really know what else we can do.
I was gonna interject. I mean, we really don't know what happened between the property when it comes in, but we have to ensure at the time it goes through the zoning that it complies. If some third party went on private property and destroyed things, it should be a private calls of action for any damages.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have public works report.
While Davey's walking up, I just wanted to interject real fast, and we're gonna table the Newtown road maintenance cost. We just got the report back from the engineers today. Um, there's a hefty $400, $500,000 price tag that will be associated with a resurfacing, so we've reached out to DOT to see if they're willing to resurface that before we even consider it. So we're, we're still going to do some research on our end before we bring it back to y'all for further discussion.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, as you recall, in our mo-, uh, recent meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago in the council workshop, Councilman Wortman, Wortman had brought, uh, to our attention the concern for, um, Bell Grove Drive with there being blind spots. And if you, he had asked me to reach out and, uh, actually go out and take some photos. I provided some photos for you there. As you can see in the photos, what I tried to indicate was that basically on Bell Grove Drive, right at, um, Clare Ridge Court, that's where the, the hill crests, right in that vicinity. And so if you're driving along that road, um, either direction, there is a blind spot on the other side of the hill. So if there are, um, if there's vehicles or equipment parked on the side of the road, then if you are, um, traveling and you run up on these vehicles or equipment and you need to, you would have to move over into the oncoming lane to go around. And in some instances, if vehicles are coming from both directions, it could put two vehicles in the same lane. So, uh, I went out and took some photos, tried to determine a, a zone or an area that would potentially be, um, be used for no parking this side of street, no parking from here to corner, is, whichever, uh, form of no parking we would want to use to, um, try to keep that, any head-on collisions happening in the future. I will say, I reached out to the homeowner association president, wanted to make them aware that we, there had been some discussion, some concerns brought to our attention that, and wanted to, uh, I was out, I was gonna be out taking those photos and trying to determine if there's an area where the signage could be placed. They were very gracious and pro-, and forwarded that information to the, uh, residents of the neighborhood, and made them aware that we were, were looking into some potentially, some, uh, no parking signs. In saying that, since that email went out, I have received some feedback from a couple of residents. And the feedback ranged from, you know, addressing the speed on the road as seems to be more important to them, those individual residents, rather than a no parking, um.
What's, what's the current speed limit?
The current speed limit's 25, but if, if, you know, if you, it just needs, it would need to be enforced.
Whole neighborhoods are 25.
Yes, and, and so I think that the speeding was, was the main, uh, concern, but, uh, there were some other concerns, uh, even, um, as far as if you have a no parking zone and you have landscapers coming to, you know, or any kind of, any contractor to come to your yard, they would have to park, uh, in front of someone else's home or beside someone else's home. So it, it, the, the feedback varied and, uh, around those, uh, type of topics, but, um, quite frankly, I could not make a determination of how, uh, the length of that entire zone, what it should be. I think I know what it is, but I'm not a traffic engineer, so I wanted to provide this information, uh, to you and find out if you would like for me to involve our engineer, to have them come out and actually do their, provide their feedback on the type of signage, the distance, uh, from the signage in the areas that would, uh, potentially be the no parking zone.
On, on the photo you provided, are, are the yellow lines indicating something specifically? Is that the zones that, that you would recommend?
That was, that was the zone that I believe that where you would have the no parking, um, from point A to point B on both sides of the road. But again, I would, I would be more confident if we had our engineer look at this and review it.
What, uh, what I suggested at the last meeting, and this is the reason why I brought this up. I was pulling into Bell, Bell Grove two week, uh, two weeks ago, just before our meeting, and met a pickup truck in my lane, which from what I could tell was probably exceeding the speed limit. I'm not a police officer and I don't run radar, so I can't tell you for sure. But, um, at any case, there was a car parked at the crest of the hill, which I have seen many, many times, um, parked in that same position. When I did some research, I found that there, the neighborhood CCRs say no parking on the street in their community. There's a reason for that. Those streets in there are two lanes, period. It's just enough to get two vehicles safely past each other. They are not wide enough for parking. So they, I wouldn't think that they would give us a hard time about enforcing no parking within the community, being that their CCRs call for that. The main thing is, is that if we put no parking on those streets, being their village streets, sheriff's department can enforce the no parking zone because it is their ordinance. They cannot enforce CCRs. That would be something that they'd have to do in, within the, their own neighborhood. I feel like it is very unsafe from Claridge Court to, um, Bonds Grove Church because of that sightline for any vehicles to be parked there. I do understand that contractors have to do, they have to, you know, park on the street and what have you on a regular basis. There would have to be some kind of provisions for that, but I would suggest that from Claridge Court to Bonds Grove Church, it'd be no parking at any time because of the, the site issue. Um, that's very, very dangerous there. So that, and you found out when you were out there taking pictures, it's, it's extremely dangerous if a car's parked there. You can't see another vehicle oncoming.
So, so a lot of times people get, a lot of times people get upset because of sign pollution and stuff like that. Are you aware of concerns that the neighbors would have? Are they concerned with the signs being in their yard, that type of thing, because?
They're not in their yard, Joe. They're in the, in our right of way.
Okay. To them, it's in their yard because it's, even though it's a right of way, but having a sign there, is that the issue, or they just don't want signs? The other option is, and I don't know if this is a legal question or not, is if you, as you turn into that property, if you have one sign posted, no, no parking along this, no parking on this street at all. Problem solved, isn't it, at the beginning of the, can we, instead of hiring a engineer to go look out and figure out what's specific, if we really want to get people and to comply with the CCRs as they drive in, if you have a sign, and maybe you can answer that question, officer, that if the sign is there, says no parking on this street, would that allow you to take action if someone was parking on the street? And there are, there are cul-de-sacs that come off the main drag.
I guess the question is, is will every car that enters that neighborhood pass that sign? Yes. Okay, well then I think you would probably, I mean, at that point, everybody would have an equal opportunity to see that sign. If it says no street parking, you know, whatsoever within the neighborhood, then, then yes, as long as it's in the ordinance. And we've, we've already went over enforcing town ordinances in the past. As long as it's in that ordinance and we can take action, then, then we can take action.
Is, is there specific verbiage or leeway when you're talking about what was mentioned about temporary, like landscapers that have a truck, have to get mowers out, those type things? How, how, how do you handle those situations when you have no parking?
Well, I think it was, like with anything, discretion is key in this case. If you get out there and it's somebody that, you know, let's say it's an Amazon delivery person and they're gonna be there for five minutes, well, I think that's a discretionary thing, that if our deputies were called to that, then they would realize what it is and move on. But if it's somebody that continues to park in a way that's making the roadway unsafe, a habitual offender, if you will, then that's something that, that would, would likely lead to some sort of action on our part. But I, I think you just have to really, um, take each situation's unique circumstances into account. Yeah, I mean, I, I know you've been sitting there listening, and it's, it's mainly, I mean, I, I totally understand about people having to work and do other things. It's mainly the crest of that hill. It's a very bad sightline, and that's why I brought it up. I'm, I'm not out to tell people they can't park for their house, but I happened to look at their, their CCRs. We have a copy here at village hall, and it said that they prohibit parking on the street, period. It's because it's narrow streets. I get it. So I'm just saying, you know, if we reinforce their CCRs with no parking on their streets, then it would seem like that would be prudent. Their village streets, and it would make that street much safer. Right. Ultimately, if the neighborhood, if you went to the neighborhood and said, we need you to enforce your CCRs, and they did that as a first step, you know, then that may fix your problem altogether. But if, if you go to that neighborhood and ask them to do that and they don't do that, then, then you may, may want to take that action. Or you may want to ta-, take action to begin with. Um, I'm just not sure what the, the council wants to do in that case.
Andy, how many, how many houses are, Andy, how many houses are at the top of that hill? That are maybe caused, maybe where the issue is?
There are basically two.
So can we have a conversation with those two houses and say, hey, tell your landscapers, tell your people, tell your people that live in your house, don't park here? Because we all got an email today from a resident who says that she doesn't think the no parking's gonna work. It's really the speed thing. So I don't, I mean, I don't know if everybody read their email today or not, but we got one. And I would be, now granted, their CCRs say that you can't park in the street. So maybe that's the conversation that we need to have, like Lieutenant May said, is have them that they need to start enforcing it. But I, I don't know. I mean, I feel like, I, I feel like we're enforcing something that they don't really want enforced.
Well, um, Chaplain, being that these are village streets and we've recognized there's a problem, is there a liability on our part if we don't take action on it?
I mean, people, they're gonna be responsible. I don't know that there's a liability for us mandating no parking because that's a discretionary act, and usually you have, uh, immunity for discretion. because that's a discretionary act, and usually you have immunity for discretionary acts. But you also want to make things as safe as you can. I mean, one thing is telling them that it may be it's an inactive HOA, but usually they enforce their covenants because they have the no parking because people that have covenants in neighborhoods don't want parking on the streets. But you, you still can take a public safety approach with them being town streets and go above and beyond the, the HOA if you, you so desire.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know. I brought this up because I feel like it's a safety issue. It seems like everybody doesn't want to do anything. So it's, if the HOA will enforce their, their covenants, then, then great. But if they won't and it continues to be a problem, then we need to do something about it. It's the way I feel about it. I mean, I feel like it's a major hazard. I was almost hit head-on by a truck flying around another vehicle that was parked there, couldn't see me, and, you know, I mean, I firsthand experience, so that's why I brought it up.
As I walked away, I thought about one thing. I was a patrol deputy in Indian Trail several years ago and we had an issue with street parking. And it was where, to the point where fire trucks and ambulances could, could not get to the house they were going to. And the town of Indian Trail addressed it through an ordinance. And I'll be happy to do some research on how they did that and work with Christina on what that looks like for our deputies to become involved in that process. If we just strictly go through the town ordinance violation, I will ask you to keep in mind that that, that's not an infraction. That's a misdemeanor, criminal offense. So that goes above what a standard ticket would be. It's an, it's an arrestable offense. So not sure if you want to put that stiff of a penalty on a parking violation. Once again, up to the, up to the council. But discretion would, would come in huge for us on that. But I'll be happy to, to work with staff to determine how, how it's worked in other places in the past to prevent this issue. And, and we can go from there. So that's another option. Sorry.
So where are we at on that? Do you want, do you want, do you need a?
I was just providing an update tonight and, and we can, we can discuss it among staff and maybe bring, bring something back to you in, at a future meeting, but.
I mean, I mean, sorry to interrupt, Andy, but I would like to see like the HOA get contacted and just try to, try to go through them and try to have them talk to their residents. And if they can't, if they can't enforce their own CCRs, then we can revisit it. Because I, I mean, I don't disagree with what Andy's saying. It's a safety issue. But I also don't want to overstep either. So if we can get them to try to talk to their neighbors and tell them, this isn't safe, tell your, whoever's parking there to stop, I mean, maybe that'll work. And if not, give it a month, we'll revisit it and see, see what it looks like.
Yeah, I, I think one other thing too is, you know, when we look at this, if there is a safety issue because of the topography of the area and so forth, I, I'd prefer to focus on that area where the safety issue is. Because I have some concerns with, you know, saying it's blanketly for the whole neighborhood. I mean, you could have a kid's birthday party at your house with five or six kids coming over with their parents and them essentially have nowhere to park if you're doing the whole neighborhood. Whereas if you designate, you know, an area where there might be a problem, that might be a more prudent thing to do. So, you know, if we were to do something, I, I'd focus on just the area where there is the safety issue. But, but I'm not necessarily in favor of, you know, looking at the whole neighborhood because that's a neighborhood, I, I don't think they have a clubhouse, a pool with a parking lot, you know, those type of amenities and stuff, so.
The other reason I suggested the whole blanket is because apparently it was in the CCRs.
The CCRs is the, is no parking.
Well, and yeah, and that again is, you know, I, I agree with, I, I agree with Kimberly too of kind of putting it back on the HOA to, to kind of self-police first with the understanding that, hey, you know, it's been recognized as, as a safety issue and, and Marvin is responsible for those streets. So, you know, it might give them some more, you know, impetus to, to manage it internally.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the next item. I actually do have some good news here. The stormwater asset inventory has been completed and AMT Engineering provided it to us. We did receive it today. It's quite a bit of information. I started looking through it. I haven't even had time to share it with Christina yet, but we do have it in hand. We, I'm starting to review it. I'll meet with AMT representatives soon and get more information, have them explain some of the, the database to me. But we do have it and should be bringing some information to you in future meetings. And then I wanted to give a quick update on the wounded heroes courtyard. The, of course, the Independence Fund had previously provided a sketch of the future wounded heroes memorial courtyard here at Village Hall. I will give kudos to Councilman Wortman. He has taken this project and devoted his time and efforts in trying to provide feedback and, and some, add some design work as well. Once all of this information is, and feedback has been completed and received, I will then provide that to the Independence Fund representative and they will then take that information back to their architect and have plans drawn up, which we would then bring back to council for your approval. So it, the process, the, the project is still on, is moving forward. We should have some updates coming up in very soon. And that's my, my public works report.
That's your report. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Deputies' reports.
Now, we've already spoke tonight already, but thank you for the opportunity to, to address you once again this month. As you can see, I won't go through each number or each type of call for service individually. But as you can see, our Marvin personnel, along with the other sheriff's office personnel that helped cover this zone, have been busy this month or in the past month. Several instances of careless and reckless driving have been addressed. We continue to conduct preventive patrols and business checks to ensure the safety of all residents. And the one thing I wanted to take a moment to, to hit on is it is summer. Schools just let out this week and we are already seeing an increase in unlocked motor vehicle break-ins that are occurring overnight. I know the meetings are live streamed, so I hope it, it reach, or recorded at least. So I hope this reaches a large crowd when I encourage everyone to lock those car doors, to take vital or valuable items out of the car, primarily your weapons. Just last night in Indian Trail, we had between fifteen and twenty cars broken into in, in about a three-hour period. Several of those cars, most of those cars being unlocked. So this is a preventable crime. This helps keep our crime numbers low. It helps keep our deputies on the street being proactive instead of reactive documenting incident reports that could have been avoided. So please lock those car doors. If, once again, as always, if residents are taking those summer vacations, please use that free residential check and we'll be happy to come check on your home while you're away. But unless there's any other questions, that's all I have.
So I, I'm gonna say it again. I'm gonna keep saying it until something changes. We've got a hundred and twenty-one mile an hour top speed on Waxaw Marvin Road, ninety-nine miles per hour on, on another sign. This is ridiculous. And we need to do something, something, somehow, some way. We need to figure out who these people are and get them stopped because it is extremely dangerous. Hundred and twenty-one miles per hour on Waxaw Marvin Road between the curve on one side and the curve on the other and residential neighborhoods and residences along that stretch is extremely dangerous.
I agree.
And I, and I don't, and whoever it is is doing this, I, you know, I mean, I don't know how you didn't die because I know that curve and I don't know how you can slow down from a hundred and twenty-one miles an hour and negotiate that curve. Because I know the direction that the sign picks up and you're heading towards that curve. And I know that they run the other way towards the village even faster, a lot, because I sit and hear them in my backyard all night long. And something needs to get done. And I don't know what we have to do to get somebody out there to take care of this. But residents are, I'm hearing more and more from residents about the, the drag racing out there at night and they're getting bolder and bolder. The more the traffic, the bolder the people, and we're having problems.
So, so these, these tallies are monthly, correct?
Yes, sir.
Fairness, I don't discount what you're saying, but ninety, high nineties are within it. I think what's reasonable, some maybe ten miles an hour. And if you look at the crazy ones that are seventy-one miles or higher or any of them, and you look at that number, it, it tells me that it's probably very few individuals that are doing it. Once we find out who they are, then that issue really goes away.
It is, it is a small.
If there's twenty-two people on, I was looking at one of them that went, or twenty-two people went seventy-one to seventy-five miles per hour on Marvin Road in a month's period, that tells me that's probably one person doing it all the time. And if we could dial in and find out when that timeframe is, maybe it's some idiot trying to get to work late at night or what? I don't know.
Well, I can tell you.
But I don't think it's a, the majority of the people are.
What I can tell you, Joe, is, is that radar sign is not picking up both directions. And I know, because I live on that stretch of Waxaw Marvin Road, that it's way more than what's showing up here because they're going the other direction. They can, they start from, from Henry Nesbit and go towards Newtown at a high rate of speed. Sure. All the time. Motorcycles, cars, you name it. It's out there all night long. And they go the other direction from there too, heading towards Waxaw. But Henry Nesbit, that corner, they take off from there all night long. That's all I hear.
Does the data actually collect the time date stamps of all of these infractions?
So just to be frank with you, I've not personally seen the insights of the data page from the radar collection software. Deputy Swan usually pulls those reports for us, or I believe Dave as well. You may have access to it.
Yeah, because, because I think if, if maybe we just do a little bit more analysis of that data, it could reveal some specific times, especially what you're talking about, if there may be repeat offenders, you know, that. So taking a look at that. The other thing that I would say is, you know, from the overview report and, you know, in, in the business world, you always want to look for trends. So, you know, I think on our side, from a staff perspective, if we might just kind of bring this data into an Excel spreadsheet so that we can kind of track month to month, all of those different incidents, not, not of the speed per se, but, but just the, the compiled table so that if we notice more larcenies happening in the summer, I'd, I'd just like to be able to kind of look at that over the last quarter or over the last six months just so we can keep our eye on, you know, better whether, what trends might be happening.
So I don't want to give away trade, trade secrets, but I'm gonna ask this question.
Okay.
As an officer, if you are trying to catch speeders, do you have to be in plain view of everyone or can you actually hide?
So that's a great question. Depending on the type of radar or speed measurement instrument's being used, if they're using what we call LiDAR, which is a laser speed measuring instrument, you can, for lack of better terms, hide. I'll just be, I'll just be honest with you. I don't like it. I don't like to hide because the, the job here is to build public trust. But sometimes you do have to, to not be as visible to catch somebody speeding because if you park that sheriff's Tahoe on the side of the road, it is a billboard telling people to slow down. But there's a fine line between being super sneaky and trying to keep the public's trust. So I think we've got to be careful with that. If you're using the standard, what's in our vehicle, speed measuring instrument, yes, we are gonna have to be pretty visible to have that. I'll also say too that this, these numbers don't account for medical calls for service or fire calls for service. Just yesterday, I personally responded to a traffic crash in Marvin and I had to use my lights and siren to get there. I am sure I am one of the seventy pluses on that list.
We got one.
So was the deputy that was behind me. I'm sure that the EMS Durango that was behind us was another one of the seventies. So when you're looking at these, now, we're not the hundred and twenty-one. I can, I can promise you that. If I had to guess, that's probably a, a sport motorcycle or something like that. But I will absolutely be glad to, to get with Dave and get with Ed and try to see if we can narrow down when our worst offenders are. Also, keep in mind that our Marvin personnel are on duty for what we consider our peak hours, which is seven to seven through the week and nine to nine over the week.
So I'm gonna, where I'm going with this, I'm trying to volunteer Andy in one way, some way. Bear with me here. But no, if, if you have to be visible, I get that.
Yeah.
His particular property where he's at, very difficult to be on the side of the road and be visible because it's a very small thing. If he would allow you to park in his driveway and hide behind that little box that he has and pick them off as they come, would that be acceptable?
If a resident wanted to assist law enforcement, we would absolutely appreciate that residence assistance. However, we don't want your house to get egged or tipeed, so.
Well, I know it's, it's not in the, the sheriff's to go to knock on, to be sit in your driveway and stuff, but I'm, I'm, I'm offering your driveway as a place to pull over where it's, they can get the standard.
Several times. I saw, I saw deputies sitting down at the horse farm last week doing his job. I mean, but what I'm saying is, is, is that when, when our normal deputies are out there on, on the job, traffic's too heavy to speed. We just have too much volume. It's at night when these guys are out there doing this crazy stuff. And I have seen, in the sixteen years I've lived in that house, I've seen six wrecks that have been in our yards.
Right.
Because they've been drunk, a couple of them, or just got off the side of the road, lost control, went through the neighbor's fence, went through neighbor's trees, did lots of things. And it's high rates of speed and/or intoxication. And that's what I'm concerned with because, you know, I'm concerned with public safety. I've seen several accidents in that curve by Henry Nesbit, people not being able to negotiate that curve. Concrete truck laid over there a couple of years ago. It's just, that's what I'm concerned about and it seems to, as I've been watching this, a hundred and twenty-one is the highest one I've seen. And that's, it, it seems to be getting higher and higher as we go. So this is, it seems to be a trend that I've been watching myself that is getting more and more brazen on these people's parts. And they're, they think that there's nobody out there paying attention to them, so they do what they want.
Well, I know when our dedicated Marvin cars are not working, I have asked the sheriff's alcohol field enforcement unit and our patrol division to constantly keep an eye on this area. I will, once again, go back to them and, and ask them to focus on this particular road instead of maybe doing a full community patrol. Like I said, one, or like I've said in the past, I do want to make sure that we are maintaining a very fair line when it comes to residential checks and business checks versus traffic enforcement because ultimately we want people to feel safe in their homes. We want them to feel safe on the roadways. But like I said, there's just gotta be a good blend of it. So can we completely stop the hundred and twenty mile an hour speeder if it's one or two a month? The, the answer to that is I just don't know. We're gonna have to, to be at the right place at the right time in the right position to get that one or two people per month. It's not impossible and we'll absolutely put our efforts to it and try to use the data to support when we need to be in those locations. I hope that answers the question adequately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, PRNG report, board report.
Plannings first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over the planning board report.
Yeah, the planning board. The planning board met on May twentieth and it was quite a filled house here in the chambers. And the folks were representing both the CZ two zero two five RTS investors, that is the development that's at Ray Grove and Tom Short. And as, you know, as it was already explained by Hunter, big concern was how close this was going to be to different homes and such and the twenty-foot buffer versus going a little bit wider than that. I did get a chance to talk to a couple, Andrew and Marilyn Katz. They were, they were walking outside and they seemed real concerned. Nobody was against it. Nobody's really necessarily against the project, but they are concerned about the proximity. So there was no vote taken on that. It was just a good to hear from the folks from Somerset of how they feel about it. The next thing that came up was basically to review the Waterburger project and the new revision to what the design of it would be and how it would fit there. And it seemed to be, everybody voted on it. It was unanimous that they liked the project. They liked the way it was being set up. The representatives for Waterburger were there. That's something that's gonna be coming our way. But the planning board approved the design and the location and, and the ins and outs of it, where it was gonna be located. Third thing that we went over, of course, was the rezoning for. Third thing that we went over, of course, was the rezoning for the CZ two zero two five dash one, that is, on Marvin School Road, for that whole project right there, the RMS project. And unanimous, and I'm gonna say, it wasn't unanimous, it was six to one, but the unanimous feeling of the planning board was that they approved the zoning for that and the development. Then we went on to new business, which were two things, which will be coming our way, is two zoning map text amendments, and both were voted by the planning board. That's gonna be coming our way soon, I guess, probably the next-
Last night.
Oh, last night, excuse me, sorry. Yep, you're right. So, that's gonna be coming up for, for us to look at. That was it.
Any questions?
Nope.
Any questions? Thank you, Bob. PRNG board report, John.
So, at our meeting, we had a couple of primary topics that we talked about. We hadn't had a, a meeting the prior month, so we did discuss some of the events that we've had, recently had, reviewed those regarding Marvin Day, the Easter egg hunt, and the 5K, so a number of different successful events that we've had over the past couple of months. And I, I think they'll be starting to plan and look forward to starting conversations about Marvin Day, probably in the next month or two, as they kind of start to put that on the calendar. We did discuss some of the ideas that have been bouncing around to honor former mayor and councilman Mike Coneyack, who was a big part of kind of the initiation of the Marvin Loop. So we were discussing, you know, some of the different methods by which we could do that, either a bench with a plaque, or just a kind of standalone plaque, or a plaque on a rock, those type things. And also where the placement, appropriate placement would, would be for it, whether it's out, you know, on a specific area of the loop, or at an area convenient to where the loop will be running as you go through Village Hall Park, as it's being designed. So, you know, we, we continue to, to bounce around a couple of those ideas. I committed to kind of coming up with a, a draft for what we might put on a plaque to, to honor him, and I'll have that ready for our next meeting. We did discuss, we were able to get the new site development map for the Village Hall Park, which council had discussed in our last meeting, and we had approved conditionally upon PRG kind of reviewing it. We discussed the fact that, you know, in order to, to work to save money, that our Public Works Department would be doing a lot of landscape planting and stuff, as, as we kind of get into the latter stages of that project. And, you know, we, we do have some people with extensive landscaping, gardening experience on the PRG, folks that have helped us develop those areas within the park, and the roundabouts, and things like that. So there was a lot of good dialogue, but generally, they felt comfortable with the areas that were designated for, for those type of things within the Village Hall Park. And while we didn't get into the, the minor details of it, you know, everybody felt good about it, and, and did agree to, to push forward with that. And then Christina Trob, who's our new PRG chairperson, she's been working with a group that represents a, a lot of middle school age kids, in regards to a program called Let Me Run, where they may be looking to leverage some of the paths and readways that we have for some of their, their programs and so forth, to, you know, help kids, not really, kids that are gonna be on the, you know, cross-country team, or things like that, although some of them use our, our trails in the park and otherwise. But this'll be some specific, it, it's more of like a club-type agreement, where middle aged kids get together and, and, you know, start running and stuff together, and we, we heard a lot about it, and she's gonna continue to push down that, and, you know, try to, try to make some inroads with agreements with them. Anything I missed there, Tyler, or that was the primary stuff, I think?
Yeah, you crushed it.
Any questions for John?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, Tyler, up next with the event planning report.
All right, so, May thirty-first, had her 5K, hosted it over there at Marvin Elementary School, ran through Marvin Creek, came back out on Joe Carr at our greenway, moved back to the school. Huge turnout, we ended up with about two hundred and forty runners. We had about fourteen vendors out there, had coffee trucks. It was a really, it was a really fun morning. We got really lucky with the weather, it wasn't blazing hot, but it was still a nice day. And everyone there, we, we got complimented a lot on, on the event, and so, we had a, our staff was a huge help, I had volunteers from PRG, so that was a really fun one. Austin, your clerk, ran the race, ran it pretty quick, too. So, shout out to Austin. And shout, shout out to Mrs. Mayor, who, who placed, what, third in her age?
She did, and she's like upset, she asked, the next year she would maybe be in a better category. Needs one more year under her belt, I guess.
But, yeah, 5K was cool. So, coming up next weekend, June twenty-first, we're having the first ever Marvin Car Show out at Eford Park, partnered up with First Class Cars on that one. So anybody in the community who's got anything cool, a classic, and, you know, just something cool like that, come on out to the park. That morning will start at eight AM, and it'll last until eleven AM. That'll just be fun little morning, we'll get a coffee truck and a breakfast food truck, and it'll just be a good morning of hanging out, meeting some people, looking at some pretty cool cars. Following that, there's some stuff coming through, through the summer, don't really have much ironed out yet, but there will be some more to come. August fifth will be National Night Out at Eford Park, so you can mark that one down. I'll send y'all calendar invites, first Tuesday in August. Same deal, we'll do hot dogs and food, and we'll get our local law enforcement firefighters and everybody out there for a fun evening. That'll be from five-thirty to eight-thirty on August fifth. So, hopefully, we'll have our really cool group of young men that come out and help us. I think I've already booked them on the calendar, and they do a great job serving food. And then we usually get some really good volunteers from PRG and everybody to cook, and the council's usually out there, so that's a good evening. But, yeah. Any questions on events or anything?
Just, just Austin, especially on National Night Out, is that something you can send directly to the HOAs, just to make sure they have a heads up?
We'll blast it out like normal. Normally what I do is, I, I don't send stuff directly to HOAs. I used to, but I was getting, I was hearing the feedback, we're seeing this stuff constantly. I will shoot some, I will shoot some messages over there, but we'll, you'll see it, you'll see the emails and social media really ramp up in, in advance of it.
Tyler, for the car show, if people outside of First Class Cars wants to come in and, with their car, is there registration, or is there, you just show up?
Yep, it's just to show up, come hang out.
Is there some sort of fee, or something?
Nope, it's just a good morning, just to come out, hopefully praying for good weather, and, yes, yeah, come out and meet other people with cars in the community that you don't already know, and just kind of hanging out.
Do you have any dates? I remember it was successful last year for Kane Creek Park, Marvin Day at Kane Creek Park, any kind of dates for that so far?
We haven't narrowed any down, they had a little bit of a rollover, I think that they're getting new employee in, who was kind of my main contact. So kind of, they couldn't commit yet to know for sure. So, that is something, fingers crossed, that we get to do in July and August. And this July, I did found out from Union County, we'll spread the word about this, through July, we'll do the park passport program again, like we did last summer. So you can come out to Eford Park on the backside of our barn, we'll have a park passport with, partnered up with a bunch of parks in Union County, you go through, we'll have a hole punch, get your hole punched at your, at our park, and go to all the other parks, and then they have some prizes they'll give away, kind of at the end of the month, for people who complete it. So, be on the lookout for that, too.
Thank you. Forgot about that one, but. Any other questions?
No, I have a question. John, you talked about sending it out to HOAs. As a matter of fact, a lot of the HOAs do not send anything on to their people if it comes from the village. Okay?
Yeah.
I mean, they just, they don't want, they don't want to be seen helping us in any way. That's not all of them, that's some of them, don't they?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have Coffee with Council debrief, who, you had that with Jamie?
Jamie and I have four people, we had two from Somerset, one of them that you could talk about was Katz. The main thing they wanted to talk to us about was re-inspector buffer, they would be enlarged to stop applying that kind of, we didn't give them the-
Wayne, I can't hear you.
I turned it off, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, uh, they wanted the buffer to be larger, we gave them the information about the Miller, they said they have it. I said, they're the ones I need to talk to right now, because we still on the outside looking in, correct? As far as what we can tell them they have to do, we can offer suggestions?
My lovely yes and no answer. It is a conditional zoning, so we can recommend, or, you know, have those conversations, but that, the minimum order and standard is a twenty-foot buffer. You can always go above and beyond, but it has to be mutually agreed upon with the applicant. So, that is something that, if they agree to it, one, it will be a condition, but two, it'll also be incorporated into their site-specific plan, which is incorporated into their rezoning as well. So, that, that's really up to the council's kind of discretion, when it comes to you at the public hearing for the vote. But all conditions have to be mutually agreed upon.
Okay, that's basically what I told them. We had two other people in, who would thought that they would be speeding on Newtown Road. They are between the state line and Jones' property, they said they, it's not even safe to pull out of their driveway, and they told us that, that the US Post Office does not deliver to their mailbox. They had to move their mailbox to a safer place to get their mail.
That was where, which?
It was between Jones' property and the state line.
Jones' property.
There's only two, three houses there.
It was a Nichols property, they were the ones that-
Okay, got it. All right.
And that was all we had.
All right, thank you. WOMO report, there was, you did that last meeting, right?
Yeah, you guys talked about that last meeting.
Talked about that last meeting, so, move on to consent agenda. Information only, PRNG recommended approval of Village Hall, so that's just information only, we're not approving anything, right?
Yeah, you just, you can just do your blanket motion as normal.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Sorry, Kim, I'm looking at that like it was like information only, I didn't think there was anything on there.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Next up, we have public hearing to consider adoption for an ordinance for zoning map amendment twenty twenty-five dash two, rezoning parcel oh six oh one oh oh three D from rural residential to single-family residential SFR dash one.
I don't need a motion to open it, all right, we're good.
You're there, you, yeah, you don't need a motion to open, the mayor just opened it.
All right, I'm gonna go through my staff report. So the village has received a rezoning application to rezon the three-acre property located on Marvin School Road, parcel number zero six dash zero one zero zero three D, from rural residential to single-family, single-family residential one. This request was submitted by the property owners, essentially, the property owners were having conversations with myself prior to the adoption of the MDO, it probably dates back to three years. They've owned the, the property, I want to say for at least, what, ten years? Twenty-six?
A little bit more.
A little bit more. Either way, they've owned it for a while on top of, prior to the adoption of the MDO. They were having conversations, looking to, to subdivide the property. Essentially, this request would be to rezon the SFR one to allow the creation of one additional lot. It's three acres, but no matter which way you look at it, it can only create one additional lot, just because of the minimum lot widths and everything that, of SFR one, it, the property doesn't have enough frontage, even though it's got the acreage, it wouldn't have enough frontage to meet all the other dimensional requirements to get two lots. Does that make sense? So-
Say that again, it doesn't have all the requirements for what?
So even though SFR one is essentially a little under an acre is the minimum lot size, so in theory, looking at just a three-acre blank slate, you could create three lots. However, you still have the other minimum lot dimension requirements per the zoning. So in SFR one, that minimum lot width is a hundred and thirty feet. I believe they only have three hundred and something, like, so you couldn't get three lots, correct?
Potentially get another one.
Get an additional, yes. And that is, that is the intent of their request, to create one additional lot for their son or daughter, either way, family. So with that being said, looking at the current lot characteristics, the rural residential's minimum of two and a half acres, minimum lot width of a hundred and forty-four feet, front setbacks fifty, rear setbacks forty, side setback is sixteen. Essentially, the change to SFR one is the lot size, and then the minimum lot width is, goes from a hundred and forty to a hundred and thirty, but all the other setback requirements are the same. So essentially, this is another similar request that you guys have seen recently, where it's a property that when the MDO was adopted, obviously went from our Marvin Residential, which was our standard one-acre kind of lot, which is what is SFR one now, to rural residential, which is that rural agriculture holding district. The, the applicant held in their neighborhood meeting per the ordinance requirement on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, the, the sign-in sheets and everything should be included in your packets. In short, outside of the applicant, there was one other resident that attended the meeting. Really no questions about the rezoning, we, we were discussing floodplain and other stuff that was, had to deal with previous owners of a neighboring property and, and stuff that was done there. But no concerns, other than obviously if the property is developed, meaning that a structure's put on it, looking at floodplain compliance and all that, which, all that would have to go through the zoning permit approval, floodplain development approval, if the structure's being proposed in the floodplain. But the floodplain only encroaches slightly on the left side of the property. That's really the high level. So, that's the, the request, the, the applicant is here tonight, if there's any questions specifically for her. Other than that, the planning board or staff does recommend approval of the rezoning, finds it consistent with the Village of Marvin twenty twenty land use plan and other officially adopted plans. Planning board met on May twentieth to review and provide recommendation on the application. They voted, they also voted unanimously to recommend approval to the village council, and they voted to recommend that it is consistent with the land use plan and any of the other officially adopted plans.
Is that currently on well-accepting?
There's water at the front, there is a sewer easement, so, I don't have a map up, but essentially, if you're looking at the property from Marvin School Road, the property to the left has the sewer that runs through it, coming from Providence Downs, going to Wyndham Hall and Brattle Path. So there's an existing easement from that property to this property line, so it would have access to, to connect, and then water's available along Marvin School Road. But currently, the property is completely vacant, there's not any, any structures on it.
I just, curiosity if those, can't remember what those houses had, if they had access to sewer or whatever. Okay. Any questions from council, or for the applicants?
This, this is more to staff, but, you know, I, I know this is the third one of these that we're, we're kind of looking at, and at each one of these, one of the factors that's been brought up is whether or not that applicant had had conversations with staff or things like that prior to the adoption of the MDO. And, you know, I don't know that that should be something that should be, you know, specific to yes or no on that, but, you know, I, I guess it makes me wonder how many more of these could be out there, because we, we kind of did that rural residential for a specific reason to, you know, because- because we've been trying to constrain to some degree. Um, and, and, you know, some areas are better fits than others, you know? You don't wanna be allowing it where there's other larger lot homes, because it can affect the ones around them. Um, whereas in this area, it seems to be the other ones are one-acre lots, but I, you know, I, I'd like to have a better understanding of how much we expect this to keep kind of coming at us. Because quite frankly, the, the state has kind of tied our hands now from being able to, to help protect the lower density in the future.
Well, I, I mean, and we said this when the MDO got adopted, I fully expect, uh, council to, to review anywhere from two to five, if not more, of rezoning applications a year because of this. And that, and it was done specifically that way because of how one sixty D reads with our, tying our hands on how we can approve and not approve subdivision development and, and so on. So, this legislative decision of a rezoning is kind of that, that first step, where you guys do have a little bit more discretion to make a land use decision. Um, in this specific case, and we kind of talked about this with like the whole neighborhood meeting stuff and other previous rezonings, is that when you're looking at the rezoning application, you're, and if you're granted approval, you're looking at what the, uh, you're granting that property the right to whatever, like, uses, setbacks, lot dimensions, specifically, I mean, entirety for that district. For this property going from RR to SFR one, you know, I guess if you took a ten-acre track, and this pro, and this property came up, or similar request came up, there's a lot of uncertainty there. They could say it's being subdivided for one property or one lot, but in theory, they could create ten. Once the rezoning's approved, they have that, that right, because it's, it's all compliant with the zoning. Um, and that's where, where staff's taking the approach of especially on larger tracks where you could see, when I say more development, ones that are gonna be more of either a four to seven to ten lot subdivision, if not more, depending on the size of the track, to go the conditional route, where then you guys are more weighing that on, okay, the rezoning request is to go from this district to this district, it's specifically to subdivide, here is the site plan. So then you're, you got a little bit more of knowing what you're approving. Um, and so that's where, uh, like, so we have a rezoning application that's been submitted, that, like I said, will be coming down, uh, to, uh, to you guys probably in the next two to four months, they just submitted. So we're working through getting some things finalized before they schedule their neighborhood meeting. Um, but it's a, it's about eight acres, anyone wants to subdivide? And I told him like, you know, I don't think you're gonna get, because of these conversations of getting, um, the zoning with kind of having the unknown of how you're gonna subdivide it. So he's got a site-specific plan and working through those things, because that at least gives you, as council, as well as when they're, um, going through their neighborhood meeting, more information, more information for you guys to make that land use decision and weigh it. Um, uh, you know, the impacts on the surrounding land uses, the roads, potential schools, if it's a subdivision, and, uh, the infrastructure, water, sewer availability. So, that is kind of the way that staff's trying to push and, and make sure that the public and, and planning board and council have more information, because these conventional rezonings like this, I said, if, if there's a lot more uncertainty here, would, I mean, it would raise questions, and we've had a rezoning like that in the past. So, um, the goal is to try to get them to go conditional, and at the same time, it's a legislative decision. Even though it's consistent with the plan, um, staff's recommended, planning board recommended, it's still ultimately the village council's decision.
This is a silly question, but why would, back whenever it was rural residential, why would it be that versus, um, SFR one? I mean, what would be one of the reasons, just because they wanted large tracks in there in the pa, in the past in that neighborhood or?
No, so when we adopted the MDO, we, the previous ordinance basically only had two residential districts. You had your R Marvin Residential and then your R UC, which was basically any properties annexed into the village that didn't necessarily fully comply with the resident, or R Marvin Residential, got annexed, and it just stated whatever you were approved under the county and whatever's on your plot is what we're going with. When we adopted the MDO, we created, we have four total residential districts. Rural residential, SFR one, SFR two, SFR three. All have different lot dimension standards, lot size, all that stuff. The rural residential was added as a kind of a holding district, like it, to, one, protect certain neighborhoods that have, um, three, four, or five-acre tracks, if not larger, that we were seeing coming through the minor subdivision process under the old. And once again, that's a administrative decision, there was no kind of discussion or, or vote by the council on those minor subdivisions. The rezoning is now that vote. So, the rural residential district was established to do that. When we were then reclassifying with the adoption of the MDO, all those zoning districts, we basically took any property that was over two and a half acres and zoned it rural residential. Unless there was a previous application in place, which there was a five-acre track off of Newtown Road that had a subdivision application in place prior to the adoption of the MDO. So it was already then zoned SFR one, because it's, it's vested at that point.
Any other questions from council?
I get, and I guess I, kind of with John on this, um, it seems like this is the third one that's supposedly been talked about before the MDO change. Now, the whole reason of the, of the rural residential was to preserve the land in Marvin, so. I mean, is this the last one that's?
This is the last one to my knowledge, that there's, like I said, this, this track and one of the previous rezonings, well, there was two previous rezonings, that previous conversations were had, or one of those properties was on the market. But I have emails with, with the property owner, like I said, that goes through this. I even conveyed to her back in about February, March, that we were going through this MDO process and gave her that information. Um, once again, it was just, it was zoned rural residential, because no formal application for subdivision or anything was in place.
Okay. Any other questions? This was, and this was approved by planning board, correct?
Yes, it was recommended for approval.
All right.
No one, no one from the public signed up to speak.
So wait, I, all right, so at this point, yeah, we'll ask if there's anyone from public?
Do you want to add anything?
No one has, okay. Um, and the applicants?
You good?
Okay. Um, so we can, motion to close?
You don't need a motion, you can just say it's closed.
Okay, so, motion, the, the public hearing is closed, we're in a discussion between council only. Any concerns or?
You, you don't need a motion for, um, for the rules of procedure for this?
No, no.
Oh.
The motion is, he's saying the motion.
To take action.
For approval, and then we can go into discussion, is that correct? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I was saying, yes.
Sorry, I'm, I'm.
You, you are on the public hearing thing, you're correct on that. Yeah, if, if you're gonna take action, just clean, just do a motion and then discuss.
So is anyone want to take a stab at the motion? Council members?
Okay, I'll do it, I mean. I'm gonna make a motion to adopt an ordinance for zoning map amendment twenty twenty-five-two rezoning parcel zero six zero one zero zero three D from rural residential RR to single-family residential SFR one.
Okay, motion's.
Is that good enough?
No, there's a draft one in your, um, packets that has more land.
No, there's not.
There, I can read it out loud if someone wants to.
Hang on. And find that the provoke, proposed zoning amendment map, zoning map amendment is consistent with the Village of Marvin twenty twenty land use plan and other officially adopted village plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest. Is that good?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we need, it's, it's that two-part, the reasonableness, which is a strange thing that the legislator put in about ten years ago.
No, it, it's fine, the system that I have is not what I'm used to, what I'm looking at.
It's, it's funny, it's not allowing me to pull up that additional. Okay, we got it, so it's on the table, so further discussion.
Just, you know, I, I'd like to say, you know, as, as you can tell, and, and some of my previous votes on these, you know, I, I, I do have concerns. Now, I, I think it's important to look at each case individually as well. Um, I think it's important what Hunter has said, in that, you know, in looking at this one, I, I guess we have a little more certainty, um, because of some of the other, um, things. So like, you know, three acres, minimum could be three homes potentially, but in this case, there are other limiting factors with the road frontage that make it two. Um, I, I look at the other homes around it, and they look by and large that, that they are mostly acre lots as well. Um, you know, but I, I, I do have a concern long-term if, if there's, you know, a whole list of these out here that we keep kind of coming back to. Um, you know, and, and, and just saying, well, because they thought that they wanted to do something three years ago, that, you know, I, it, it shouldn't be just kind of a rubber stamp, you know? And, and, and I think we really do need to, to look hard at each one of these. And, and especially when we have uncertainties, and there are other contributing factors to it that, that, that we're all responsible in looking at those too.
And to, uh, to add, that's also where the, uh, the comprehensive plan will come in. Um, doing a more detailed and, and future land use map. Once again, another tool for staff, planning board and council to make these land use decisions, because right now, if you look at our future land use map, it just says residential. And it says D N G one ounce break. So, from a consistency standpoint, it's consistent, but having that land use plan more detailed, um, you know, yes, that's gonna be a process, uh, that we're gonna be kicking off in July, but still, like, that's gonna be another tool in the toolbox for for the, for this council, future council, I mean, staff, everybody to make better land use decisions there.
Yeah, and, and I also am sensitive to the fact that, you know, people, when they invest in, in property, whether it's vacant land or a home, many times they're looking at it as an investment. And sometimes it's an investment for monetary, sometimes it's an investment in their family, if, if they intend to, you know, cut off a lot for a child or, or, you know, or something to, to develop a, a second house. So, you know, um, in, in some cases, yeah, the rules have changed since they made that initial investment, you know? But, but that's also a reason why sometimes you have to act on, on, on doing things before those rules change, you know? But, um, yeah, I, I, by and large, you know, I, 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 I see that this one, yes, can make sense. But again, I, I do have great concerns, you know, continuing to get these in the future, uh, especially if we start getting larger lot ones, you know?
All right, any other comments from council? Thank you, John.
John, I just, I have to agree with John, um, everything he just said, I'm a hundred percent in agreement with, um, so that's.
Yeah, I, I do, I do too. At, at some point, we're going to have to really look at what, at this and what we're doing.
Like I said, the, the rezoning applications are gonna keep, keep coming, it's the more tools that everybody has to make these decisions and, and make sure we're weighing it based on, I mean, good information, updated data, availability of all the, like I said, what those impacts could be. Um, that's where that plan comes in, as well as in the scenario, if it's a larger thing, like, we're gonna recommend that it go conditional. And most of the time, they're gonna listen to us and they're gonna go conditional. Not saying it's gonna get approved, but at least it's one's gonna give you guys more peace of mind, takes that uncertainty out of it, knowing like, if it's ten acres and they're saying they wanna do three proper, or three, three lots, that three lots is what's getting approved a part of it, you're not giving them SFR one to do more. That's where that conditional zoning is gonna be really key in the future.
Okay. Any other comments? So voted on the table, all was in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, congrats. And, um, I'm gonna take a quick, uh, five-minute bio break, if that's all right with everyone.
Some motion to reset?
What's that?
Yeah, reset.
Rick, just. What's that? Was that okay?
Yeah, you can do that.
I thought I, I thought I could, I thought I could, I just.
I think Hunter just overruled you.
Hey, that's, there's a lot of that going on these.
Yes. He's a federal court.
Yeah, this is.
And I, and I agree, where it is, to John's point, where it is, what it's for.
That, that's pretty much what I said.
I think that is, it's not in the neighborhood, but if it, it starts in my.
You guys should mute yourself. Yeah, you two. Nope, not you two. You two behind the dais. Well, I can hear you loud and clear.
All right, we're gonna reconvene the meeting. Thank you for that, quick break. Um, so next up, we're going into public hearing for zoning. Text amendment two oh two five dash one for amendments to articles two, five, seven, eight, and nine of the Marvin Development Ordinance.
All right, so, um, the MDO was adopted last year, since then, we've been able to kind of test, uh, when I say test, like, put in the practice certain.
Any questions?
Just, yeah, one question. When I look at the image, you chose thirty foot max, twenty-five max, and then when it cuts over, it kind of cuts to the middle of the roof, not the peak of the roof.
It's how it's measured. I'm gonna get these graphics updated, but it's still saying thirty feet is the max. It's measured, it's measured to the midpoint, which is how the old ordinance.
To the midpoint of the roof?
Yeah, the, the roof line, which is how the ordinance read. Five feet isn't another story. It's just really something that can, from an architectural standpoint for the single family, it provides where you have varying roof pitches and so on. So it's not really adding like another four.
It's not adding square footage or anything like that.
And if, if you look at the way I built my house, it's within the, it's from the old one, because that was when it was applied for, and it's still, it's a two-story dwelling. It just has a twelve-on-twelve pitch.
Yeah.
Allows that, that's it, pretty basically.
Now, this next change, once again, specifically would be pertaining to the Rayleigh Miller project. It's for attached housing, so townhomes. In the adopted MDO, the, the height was limited to twenty-five feet. Staff did some research on this, and all that's been, is provided in your packet. The proposed change is basically, once again, only changing the maximum height to forty-five feet in the MU one and two. Currently, there is no properties on M1U or two. The only one that is subject, or that is potentially gonna be zoned at would be the Rayleigh Miller property. Any future properties would have to go through the same rezoning process, which would probably require a site-specific plan, and that's even if townhomes are being proposed as part of that site-specific plan. So that, this is another one that, looking at stalling specifically, because they do have a very similar ordinance, there's reeds, twenty-five feet everywhere else, and then forty-five feet in there. I think it's their seventy-four bypass district, and their mixed-use districts as well. So other municipalities, I mean, it varied anywhere from thirty to fifty feet, some two stories, but forty-five feet was, I believe, what Waxall had in stallings as well. So it's still kind of consistent with surrounding properties, but this would be specifically something that would be pertaining to a current rezoning project.
I don't, I had no appetite for anything forty-five feet in the village, anywhere. I don't know about anybody else, but I don't have an appetite for a building that, that height anywhere in our village. That's definitely over three stories.
I will say that is what is the Rayleigh Miller current elevations, if you've seen them. That is what they're, they're proposing.
That was, because I, well, I haven't seen that, and I, and I've heard some rumors about that, and I, they're not happy about it. And I, I can't say that I want a forty-five-foot building. No. And that was, I was never, I mean, that was never any of the discussions that I ever had with them preliminarily of a buil, of a building that size. They were talking about these residential units and some commercial, but nothing that tall.
Well, the commercial, the commercial's fifty feet, and the commer, and that's already permitted per the ordinance.
So you're saying residential, forty-five feet?
Just, just attached townhomes. But that's what was that, like, their elevations are already being proposed at that. So what you guys have seen, or what was shown during the public meeting, all that is at forty-five feet. So the, the way that this can, this specific regulation go, one, if council chooses, they don't have to amend it to forty-five feet, but then it would be forcing to change the elevations for that proposed project, which is fine. That's, because it currently doesn't comply. Because it doesn't comply, they can't, because the maximum is twenty-five, they can't go above that ma, like, that's the standard. They can always go less than. So, for example, if this gets approved at forty-five feet, like, the tax amendment and council wants to require as a condition for it to be limited to forty, thirty-five, that is something that can be discussed with the applicant.
So, so if I recall, did they have parking kind of really being their first floor, like a garage?
That's correct.
So then, you know, the residence would really be two stories on top of that. And if we're limiting what can occur after those two stories of living area, is that going to negatively impact the input that we can have from an aesthetic standpoint with roof pitches and things like that? Because, you know, I guess my concern is, is that they're still gonna, if they're gonna dedicate garages to the first floor in any seven-hundred, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar townhome, that there, you're still gonna need enough living area for someone to live. But if, if we're not allowing some degree of aesthetics kind of above that, are we just gonna end up with, like, flat-roofed, you know?
That's where...
Do you know what I'm saying? Is, is that what's giving us the, are, are we, are we, are we hurting our ability to affect the aesthetics by limiting that more? And to what degree can we, and still have it be a functional product?
So townhomes are, are only, they're not permitted in any current district that, any, that any property is currently is on in the village. So one, like, they would have to go through the rezoning process. Most likely, it would be conditional, because it would either be mixed-use or TNDO, which is already conditional, which then you guys have that kind of aesthetic control there. So it's not like if we amend this to forty-five feet, you're gonna see a townhome development pop up. Like, it, it, this is, would have to go through the same rezoning, rezoning process, where you guys would have input on the aesthetics, and always can, once again, based off of whatever that rezoning proposal is, if you believe forty-five feet's too high, if, like, if it was to get, could adopt like this, and once again, this is only specifically in M1 and, or MU one and MU two. Like, for example, the Heritage District does allow townhomes, part of the site-specific plan, but they have to propose them at twenty-five feet. Does that make sense? Like, this isn't changing, like, any other district. This would just be, in, in short, it's just specifically for the current proposed Rayleigh Miller project.
So at forty-five feet, I think what you're saying, are we limiting the developer on the, what do you call it?
Architectural. At twenty-five feet, I think you are, but...
But if we were below forty-five?
Well, see, thirty-five feet is the, is the height of the rest of the village. I don't see why they can't get a, a townhome at thirty-five feet. Why do they have to go to forty-five feet?
You're saying this is thirty-five?
No, this is higher than, but the steeple, all that other stuff doesn't necessarily count in the building height. Like, there's ar, certain architectural designs, design parts of... This is a...
I think it's a thirty-foot ceiling.
Thirty-foot? I was trying to... I was playing basketball, saying, like, what's ten feet?
Again, it's at the midpoint, it's the thirty-five feet. So the peak is over thirty-five feet. The midpoint between the eve and the peak, that median point, is, that's, that's the height limitation.
Once again, this...
So, so then, if we're saying forty-five feet, forty-five feet could actually be a physical height of fifty or so, or more.
Once again, you would be, in these cases, you would be looking at the elevation specifically as part of a rezoning, so you would have those high specifications as part of the rezoning package, just as you want, like, we have one, like, currently. So it's, it's still something to, like I said, this is open for discussion on this one. This is a request by the applicant for their specific plan. We did do research. I, I do think twenty-five is low for a townhome. But, you know, what that number is, like I said, we, we found anywhere, like, I think Monroe was three stories didn't necessarily have a height specifically, but then others anywhere from, I said, about thirty-five to forty-five was kind of the average that I was seeing.
I mean, I'm fine with thirty-five feet, like, the rest of the village. I think that they can work with that, being that it is the midpoint of the, of the pitch. Depending on how they do their things, they could be at forty feet at, at the peak, which should be plenty enough to get a garage and, and two floors. I mean, I just, it, it, they have to, they have to be creative with the design to get what they want, but I don't, I don't see a reason to go above our, our thirty-five-foot maximum that we have for residential throughout the rest of the village. That's my thought.
The, the elevations that they showed us, you know, the projec, can they tell us what the number is that those elevations were based on?
They're at forty-five. Why they did forty-five, I don't know. But, um, once again, that, that's something that's been requested, like, and they can't deviate from twenty-five to forty-five feet.
Yeah. I, I'd, I'd be interested in seeing, like Andy said, what they could do at thirty-five, because, you know, one of the, one of the reasons that, you know, I look at those townhomes, and, and again, that property in and of itself, what we're trying to do here is to, to allow some Marvin flavor and influence that we think can be beneficial to the neighborhood of Somerset and things versus the Union County zoning rules that they could currently go under. So when I saw the type of product that they were putting forth with the elevations, I thought it looked with the, the nice roofscapes and things like that, you know? But, you know, if, if that was predicated on it being forty-five, yeah, I, I have a concern, because then you're talking about almost fifty.
Well, and I, and I, I don't know, when I say that they are all forty-five feet, I don't know if they were measuring it to the top of the roof. I, I, I don't know. So it could be something like, yes, like, to meet this ordinance, it could be forty feet, and with some of the architectural, and kind of the roof pitches, that's why I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one. With that being said, like, council has kind of two options regarding this specific change. If you go thirty-five feet, you're then locking it in, where if you like those elevations on this, that specific rezoning, they're gonna have to amend them, potentially, potentially. Doing it at forty-five feet and still then wanting to negotiate down as part of the conditional zoning is also at hand. I mean, it, there, it's open to it. I just wanna, if we do amend this amendment to be from forty-five to thirty-five, that would then potentially have impact, and that, that's, that's fine, because, in short, even though they have a quote-unquote vested rezoning application, the current ordinance is twenty-five, so it doesn't comply anyway. It's not like we're changing something to hinder a current proposal. Would you agree, Chaplin, on that? Like, does that make sense? Okay.
I guess I'm, I'm just not familiar with what you can do with thirty-five versus forty-five, to your point, like, what, if we come in at thirty-five, what, what are we gonna be?
How is that gonna affect what we've been shown multiple times?
Right.
Yeah.
Which, which, which what we've been shown multiple times is really nice and really represents the village in a really nice way, and I don't think they're gonna be seven or eight-hundred-thousand dollars. I mean, they're gonna be closer to a million plus. And if they are putting the garage underneath, then it is gonna look nice, because then you're not gonna have a bunch of street parking happening. And what did you say the commercial side was?
The, the commercial maximum's fifty, so it all, I mean, the consistency there would, it would kind of blend in.
Okay, and it's downhill from Somerset, so it's not like these buildings would be higher than the houses in Somerset, correct?
Correct. I mean, fro, at least in the back right corner, without looking at the plan, I wanna say there was anywhere from eight to twelve feet and fall from the back of the Somerset properties, like, the back of those lots, not the back of their homes. So they would be, in theory, so can't say it without seeing a full grading plan and all that stuff, but in theory, would be sitting in the same roof pitch line as Somerset.
Okay, and this would, this would only be for this particular development?
Correct. And any future quote-unquote property that would be going, they would have to go through the same rezoning process. So that'd be then considered basically at the time of that rezoning.
And what are their current proposed single-family homes at?
They're at thirty-five, because it's the same product as the Heritage at Marvin, which was approved at thirty-five under the old ordinance. So that, the, the detached one's mainly for consistency with how the old ordinance read, but we didn't have a townhome building height under the old, like, this is, once again, all part of the new MDO. So this is something that's kind of identified as we tested it, put it in real application, and, and did some research.
Well, my feeling is, if this is project development-specific, the elevations I saw and everything, it, it looked like a nice project. So, I mean, as long as it's, you know, it's held to this, it's not like it's going to be done anywhere else and everywhere else. So we're just looking at, you know, we're just looking at this as is, just this individual project. It's not in Marvin anyway. It's going, I mean, you know, it's gonna be access, it's on River, and it's, it's...
It's gonna be Marvin.
Huh?
It's gonna be Marvin.
It's gonna be Marvin. But I was gonna say, it's over there, and it's, it's congruent with Somerset, so it's like, I, I'm just looking at it from project-specific.
And yeah, and then, like I said, this one is, it, it's not changing anything else. And like I said, in this project or any future one, we'd be going through the same rezoning process, so staff, planning board, and council be weighing and looking at the site plan, and if townhomes are proposing those elevations, and, you know, the surrounding properties, and see what those impact would be. Because once again, you can always request them to go lower. And if not, you don't have to approve it, and vice versa. I mean, it's the same case here. I think it, to, to John, kind of what you were saying, or Joe, it does give some more flexibility in the architectural design for you guys then to consider when these projects come up, is what, what it's doing in short. It's given developers, homebuilders, kind of that flexibility to propose a product with the elevations, and then, you know, see if that's what we, as the village, thinks fit. And if it doesn't, I mean, that would hurt their rezoning.
Part of my concern, though, is that I don't wanna allow for, you know, better, you know, looking utilization and, and architectural things with all of a sudden, now we're squeezing in another floor, you know, or something like that. That's, that's more of what I'm concerned about. You know, I'd, I'd prefer to leave that flexibility, so that it can, it can have some distinguishing architecture with varied roof points and things like that. But, but, you know, like I said, my other concern is that you put it too low, and you're not allowing for even, you know, two stories above a garage, and then, next thing you know, they, they just wanna have a flat roof, you know, which...
Yeah, I agree. Like I said, twenty-five is, I think, very low, in my opinion. Forty-five is just what's being proposed, so... Do we have any other questions? I mean, this is all being packaged together, this, this portion, I mean, we can, if council is not, if they don't wanna vote on the forty-five or approve the forty-five, like, we can work through that amendment when we make our motion. But I just wanna make sure that everybody, that's clear, because since it's like...
Planning Board approved this unanimously?
Uh, it was six to one, I believe.
What was the question?
Planning Board.
Oh, no, they, they did unanimously vote to recommend it. Like, the whole package. There were, the, these same, this same discussion was coming up with the forty-five feet there, but it was voted then unanimously to recommend approval.
Okay, do we have anybody from the public?
No, there's no one here. Last one, the councilman wants to take their council hat off and speak.
All right, well, can I, can I make a motion, and if we have further discussion?
Yes, please. I can close the, uh, close the public hearing, and we're gonna go ahead.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance for zoning tax amendments to Articles two, five, seven, eight, and nine of Marvin Development Ordinance, and filed the proposed zoning tax amendment as consistent with the Village Department's 2020 land use plan and other officially adopted village plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest.
Okay, further discussion? Anyone?
I, I would just say, I, especially given the fact that this'll only apply to this specific site, which, you know, from the very start, I've felt to be supportive of, because, you know, we, we, we already know what the alternatives are under a much higher density commercial under Union County rules. So the fact that, you know, I think we are limiting this to just this specific project, and, and wanting to allow them to have that flexibili, flexibility from an architecture standpoint with the roof lines and stuff, you, you know, I, I think I would support the forty-five. I just wanna make sure that, you know, we are gonna still continue to have input on that, and make sure that they understand we're not squeezing another floor in there or anything like that, you know?
That's fair.
I will add to, I know that Kim made the motion, but the last change is the changes to the neighborhood meeting that we've discussed, basically just the meeting requirements and subdivision. That's also included in this, too, but...
Why are you changing it from being required to suggested?
That's only in conventional rezoning. And that goes back to the last rezoning where I said, conditional rezonings have more detail. They're still required for conditional zonings. It increases if, if that hundred, or thirteen-hundred-feet buffer is, it touches a subdivision, that whole subdivision has to be notified. The conventional rezonings are the ones that, for example, the rezoning that you guys just voted on, one person came. And they, you can ask a question, like, with the conventional rezoning, you can't tie it to a site plan. You, they can say they wanna do three, three, or two lots, but in theory, I mean, if they could do more, you can't tie it to anything. So with all the research, we found, like, we're putting that it's recommend, or it's not required, but it's recommended, and I feel like that gives staff the discretion. If somebody goes the conventional rezoning route, and it's something that's maybe needs to go through the neighborhood meeting, we can require it, and if it's one that is very straightforward, the neighborhood, I mean, because it's an applicant-driven meeting, that's just what staff recommends. If you guys wanna keep it required for conventional zoning, I, it's just, it's an extra step in the process. It's just, it, once again, you take a chance at having that neighborhood meeting advertised and all that stuff in the staff time put in, and then nobody comes.
Well, I mean, you could say the same thing about council meetings, so...
Well, we're really pushing conditional zoning for any projects.
I think that the public deserves the, the requirement versus the suggestion, because suggestions are just that. They don't have to happen, and I feel like that that could be, and, and maybe you or us, we wouldn't do that, but maybe somebody down the road would take that and run with it and just not. And I, I feel like that that's...
In the ordinance...
That's leaving things too loose.
In the ordinance already, if we adopt it as is, where it's recommended, and it gets to a public hearing, and those ques, and, and council asks if the applicants met with adjoining property owners, all this stuff, and there's a lot of pushback from those adjoining property owners and stuff, you guys already have that discretion in the ordinance to table the decision and require a neighbor, the applicant to meet with, to conduct a neighborhood meeting. So you have that authority if you guys think, with this is, but what, the way it reads now, that they have to do it, and they have to do it before it gets to the public hearing. So you still do have a leg, if you think, if sta, if, for example, if staff doesn't recommend it, or the applicant decides not to do it, you guys, when it gets to the public hearing and you guys are voting on it, you can table the decision and require it.
Well, and with the straight zoning, without it being conditional, there aren't as many variations. If it fits the subdivision plan, it does, it's the rezoning, and the public still has the opportunity to go to the planning board meeting and come to the council meetings, and there's usually multiple planning board meetings. So there, there is an opportunity, but you can always require more. But our MDO has generally gone higher in most areas, such as the public notification and some other areas. I think they're trying to simplify the process for the straight zoning.
It's not making it easier, it's just, it's making it clear, yeah. Because you can't tie it to anything. So if somebody comes and says, hey, what do you wanna do? And they were like, well, I wanna do this, okay, we'll just ask questions about water or something like that. They don't have to have that figured out, because it's not tied with the rezoning already. And that's kind of the issue that we have, is that if you have a neighborhood meeting and you have an applicant that's saying they're doing this, and they do something completely different, if the rezoning's approved...
Their conditions aren't binding, because you can't do that on straight zoning. So they can go and really do a great proposal and show these forty-foot buffers, but then come back and meet the, the twenty-foot buffer requirements. So, so that the neighbors, in the conditional, they can ask for things that are unique to the property, that in one area they want a water buffer, and then that can be binding, and I think that's why it's more productive in the conditional. But you could still require it. Certainly, that's up to y'all.
So you're okay without changing the motion that's on the table? Or do you wanna add that as a caveat?
I mean, I'm, if, from, from my standpoint, I, I'm in agreement with everything except for the forty-five foot. I, I can't, I can't vote for that. So however it needs to go for vote, if we're gonna package it all together, I'm gonna have to say no on all of it. So, because I'm not gonna vote for a forty-five-foot height.
The motion on the table is for the entire package. If Kim has the opportunity to withdraw her motion, to amend her motion, or to allow her motion to stand, and then you all, then you all vote on it before you make any other actions. Is that sound, you agree, Chaplin?
Yeah, there would have to be, with your oral amendment, or you vote on this one, and then you could vote on a subsequent if it doesn't carry.
All right. Any further discussion on this motion that's on the table? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are you a nay?
A nay.
Any nays?
Nay.
One nay? Okay, so, you got that, Austin? All right. Okay, moving forward, thank you. Unfinished business. Consider approval of draft community survey questions.
All right, I'm going to make this quick. Thank you all for responding to my emails about the community survey. I sent a lot of them. I was gonna start doing house calls next. Give me one second, this thing is not popping up for some reason. Oh, hold on. There it goes. Okay. So regarding the survey, we're really just gonna talk about changes proposed. We are at fifty-two questions? So we have a very long survey, but I think it's, I think it's been very well written. To start off with the changes, though, the first one was proposed to question four, to rephrase that question to read, do you currently utilize any Village of Marvin parks and/or trails? Previous language was the Village of Marvin's, the Village of Marvin has many parks or trails, do you currently use them? So really just rephrasing that question. I like this, the way this is written now, this was suggested by John. Does anyone have any issues with this change?
No.
No.
Nope.
Okay. So next, right here, one more, question eight, this is also proposed by John, changing the question to add, does your opinion change if new amenities are partly taxpayer-funded in a grant, grant match from, and he added, from federal, state, or other funding sources? How do you feel about?
That's fine.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm opposed to that.
Keeping it going. We reordered a few of these answer choices, but it's kind of subjective, so... And this was the other one. Question forty was to, this one was regarding the Marvin Bonds package that I ultimately approved. We originally, originally had this as a multiple-choice question, but it was suggested by Mayor Polino to make this fill in the blank. Could be suggested that giving these answer choices could lead someone to a response, whereas having a fill-in-the-blank would make, would force the person to actually think, actually write what, why they voted against it, instead of just selecting a pre-approved choice.
My whole idea, my, what's that?
Good thinking.
Well, my whole idea behind it is, a lot of these are things that we've heard and we're saying, but it's like, let, let the people speak, and quite frankly, based on what happened with the legislation and how they tied our hands, we couldn't even, we couldn't even find out who was the big no that were holding signs out to the point where they should have at least had their names on them, so we could say, go collect your signs, so we knew who we were dealing with. It was so unfair, and we're filling in the blanks for them. Let's just really figure, if we're really gonna ever consider something like this again, let's figure out what, what it was the issue that, and, and, well, then to...
I think that's fair.
Yep, that's good. Let him fill in the blank.
The only other change proposed was by me, actually. I thought of this one after. It was adding question forty-nine, are there any features or content that you would like to see on MarvinNC.gov? I spend a lot of time managing the website. Well, not a lot. I try to do a little bit of maintenance, you know, a little every week, just trying to make sure that really old stuff is taken down, new stuff goes up, there's no broken links, that sort of thing. But I also try to think about what, what services do we offer online? What are people able to do with our website? So this would at least give someone the chance to say, you know, I really would like to look, be, I would like to look up historical permits online. That's something we could look into, a software that we could acquire. I want to see a map of all Marvin roads that's interactive. That's something we can work on, just for example. So, just to get ideas. Is everybody good with that question?
Yep.
All right, so before we finish, that's, that was the only changes. I just wanted to kind of tell you all the next steps. So at your next meeting at the work session, you will have the contract with Central Line on, on your consent agenda. We, I will need a lot of time with Central Line to really get the... We, I will need a lot of time with Centralina to really get this thing rolling. There's a lot of things we had to work out, getting the postcards designed that people will get in the mail with their unique identifier codes to be able to do the survey. They're gonna take a look at these questions, and they're gonna let us know, hey, we think these questions, they could say these, some of these questions are leading, and here's why. We suggest this language. They might suggest reordering answering choices, things like that. But once I get their recommendations, I'll bring that back to you guys to approve, to prove it, to prove these again. But the point of bringing this to so many meetings is for transparency, you know? I wasn't here during the 2019 survey. Most of us weren't. I can't speak to much of that survey. I know it was written by a former council member. But this survey has been, this survey has been before the PRG board for, for many months. It was before the planning board. One of our planning board members, Angel Martin, she wrote the first draft and did a great job. So, it, this has been a labor of a lot. A lot of time has went into it, and I think we're going somewhere pretty exciting with this. The goal right now-
So, Austin, I'm gonna interrupt really quick.
Yeah.
Sorry. But I'm glad that you brought up the 2019 survey and that you, you know, and Centralina is gonna take a look at it to make sure that there's no questions that are leading. I want the public to understand that the 2019 survey was done by a former council member who was not necessarily in the same thought process as anyone that was on council at the time. Bob, I know that you said in a meeting that you thought the last survey was leading. So, I want to make sure that you are good with this, and you don't think that any of these questions are leading.
No, I think it's pretty broad. I think especially the first two questions.
Okay. So, you have no problem with the questions? You don't think any of these questions are leading?
No. I mean, it's developed by the Parks and Rec that put it together. It talks a lot about green space and trails. But it also talks about communication. There are other factors in it.
This, like I said, this survey, it starts, it starts out very general. Like I said, Angel, she wrote the first round of questions. Those were the more general questions about deputies at critical intersections, funding projects through different funding sources, those sorts of questions. And then we got the PRG board. They brought in a lot of those project-specific questions regarding parks and greenways and trails, and are we interested in an aquatic center, those sorts of questions. So, they got, they got very specific, and they had very detailed instruction, very detailed discussions regarding the survey. And Jen Castellucci really compiled those for us. So, really, it was merge, it was taking the input from staff and our working group for the survey, mixed with the planning board, and mixed with the Parks and Rec board, kind of merge. We, a lot of people have had their hands on this, and I think it's made for very fruitful discussions and a very good-quality survey. But like I was saying, the last bit of the timeline right now, my goal would be to have you guys approve the final, final, final questions in August. That gives me time to work with Centralina to get every, to kind of get the logistics worked out and to get those back to you. I'm anticipating the survey possibly opening in mid-September, run for two months, close right around Thanksgiving. And then I would have y'all, I would have y'all, Centralina would show up to present the actual results in January. And one more thing, I don't, I, I think I've mentioned this to you before, but I have no intention of knowing the results before the public. So, you guys, so we will all, we will all learn the results of the survey at the same time.
Together. Okay. Any other questions?
I do need a motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the survey questions as amended.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. New business? We don't have any?
Nope.
Open topics, anyone?
Yeah, I have one. I, so I have, I saw a, a comment about our tax rate on Nextdoor that I, it kind of rubbed me the wrong way. We were accused of funding pet projects with our tax rate because our tax rate was a little higher than what the county was proposing for their above-revenue neutral. And I want to remind everybody that one full cent of the tax rate is going towards roundabouts in this village. I don't believe that that's a pet project of ours. I think that's a necessary project that I believe most of the citizens in this village are in agreement with us funding. These things are very expensive, and the only way we are going to be able to pay our twenty percent share that NC DOT requires of us for these projects is to save for them. So, remember, one full penny is going into that pot towards those roads.
The roundabouts.
So, it's just the roundabout.
Just, that's what I'm saying, the roundabouts, just, just the roundabouts, just those NC DOT projects. So, I just want to remind everybody that that's where-
I'm curious, what pet-
Twenty percent of our-
What, what are we doing that are our pet projects?
I don't, I don't know. That was what we were accused of. So, I just want to remind everybody of, of where twenty percent of your, your tax money is going is towards these roundabouts. So, that's all I have.
You're so sensitive. Just kidding. All right. Thank you. Any, anyone else? All right. Moving on. Review of action items.
All right. Going back, I've got your approval of the survey questions. You guys won't see these again for a while. You guys will see the contract at your next meeting. Scrolling back, we don't really have much else.
Davey's gonna conduct a quick assessment of Oak Brook Estates.
Yep.
And then additionally talk to the HOA regarding neighborhood reconciliation of the no-parking issue, and then we will bring that back in a month if that doesn't work.
You guys also need to give Hunter your feedback for the RFQ. He needs that this week.
Yes. Okay.
I will start making house calls.
We understand. See if I pick up. Moving on. If there's nobody, no other comments with that, Mayor Kim's pro-Kim list.
I'm good. I, I can't see it. It's fine. I'll do it next meeting.
It's, it's in your, it's in there as an attachment if you want, but I-
It's, my, I, I don't have great service. It's not working. Just, I'm good.
Okay. All right. On to council comments. Kim, I'll let you go first if you want. Kim?
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute. I'm good. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Wait.
Pass. John? I'm good. Thank you.
I, I just want to thank Lieutenant May for taking some, some questions tonight. I didn't mean to be as, as hard on him as I was, but I, I, I do feel like we have a, a need in the village to, to get these people to slow down, so I apologize, Lieutenant May, if I was, was hard on you. That's it.
All right, Bob?
No comment.
All right. I'll say a few things. Thank staff, obviously, you guys working. Tyler, again, congrats. And we'll make sure you get that recog, recog, not recommendation, but-
Accommodation.
Certificate, accommodation. Thanks to the Sheriff's Department, too, for their work. I was gonna thank the two attendees, but then I realized later that they were part of the public hearing. So, it's back to the saying, unless there's a backhoe in your backyard, nobody shows up. So, again, no one here for your information, Kim, in the audience, really. But I do want to just reach, kind of reflection. Last night was graduation. Some information that you get, we were rained out last night, so we ended up having it this morning. They got to speak. Five hundred and seventeen students graduated. Ninety-nine percent graduation rate, pretty damn good. Still in the top three percent of all public schools in the country. Just listen to that. And, and the only thing is my reflection, because this was my last year of, I think I jinxed it last night and said this is the last real official thing I'm going to at the high school for all my years of my kids being in school. And of course, it rained, so I had to go this morning. But I, I, I'm here to tell you that this, the parents that have their kids still in school, this is your last opportunity to be involved with your kids. Because once they go off to college, that, that sort of disappears. And, and what I'm meaning by that is that, you know, just talking to some of the principals and, and stuff that, and, and I try to be around there as much as I can, that volunteering or being a part of your kid's group, if you can do it, please, reach out and get involved at the band. For me, it was the band. It was, I think, almost ten years in the band, and I'm finally letting that go. So, it's, but just watching these kids grow, it's, it's really your last chance to see it. So, as a father, I, I look back at that, and I just, I, I think, you know, we have, we have a really good thing going here, and I think a lot of it is because of the parent involvement, and hopefully that stays the same. I did get a comment from my wife as we drove through the middle, the end circle here, oh, what's that trail? And I, I missed it, but all of a sudden, a trail has appeared that's part of Joan's Homes, I believe. And it's coming out. So, if you haven't seen it, take a look over there. And it's part of the trail that we talked about that's gonna connect everything to each other. She goes, wow, that looks really nice. And it, it's not even remotely close to being done, I don't think. I think there's only stone right in there that's coming out of there. So, looks pretty cool, cool development. Finally, from last week, great turnout. I took the opportunity to go around to each vendor at the five K and thank them for running. Want to thank the principal for opening up the school because, you know, having to worry about bathrooms and stuff like that, you always worry about that. And they, they were like, it's no big deal. But thank, thank them as well, and all the vendors who participated in that event. I think it was a great event. People enjoyed themselves, so we look forward to having more of those. With that, I'll need a motion. We're not going into closed session, are we? Need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Have a nice time, Kimmy. She was out. What's that? Oh, yeah.
She was done with us.
Yep.